...thirteen meeting of stable board of education. Could everybody please stand and join me in the class? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Board Secretary, this meeting has been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act.
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Have role quarters.
Mr. Malcolm, Mr. Bakker, Mr. Bishala, Mr. Bozinski, Mr. Syak, Mrs. Defentho, Mrs. Akuryam, Mrs. Travis, and Mr. McEnroe.
I am present.
This evening in executive. This evening in executive under personnel, the Board of Education discussed the supervisor of elementary education, supervisor of mathematics, under the negotiations, Save All Education Association contract, attorney-client privilege, use of trademark, use of facilities, council on local mandates, and on the student discipline, hit report two thousand twelve thirteen sixty-seven dash sixty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents, everybody should receive the work order reports, the technology meetings, any questions, comments. Also, everybody should receive the minutes from the July sixteenth two thousand thirteen meeting, any comments, corrections, or additions to the minutes. If not, accept the motion to accept and file the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, need a roll call.
And Mr. Syak. And Mr. Bakker.
Yes.
Mr. Bishala.
Yes.
Mr. Bozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. Defentho.
Yes.
Mrs. Akuryam.
Yes.
And Mrs. McEnroe.
Yes. Mr. Superintendent, your report.
Thank you, Mr. McEnroe. A, buildings and grounds, this is our hit summary report, which we'll discuss at the end a little bit more. Just quickly, we had this entire year compared to the year before, we had sixty-eight reported cases of HIBs and approximately twenty-six that were considered to be confirmed compared to the year before, which was a hundred and eighty-eight reported versus sixty-eight and ninety-one confirmed. So we substantially went down, and I want to congratulate the teachers and administration, and hopefully that will, that trend will continue next year, but I know, I'm inside, I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of the, at the end of my report. Moving to number two, there is two uses of Samsung Elementary School for a cultural event as well as the use of a university to continue its program in that district. Any questions?
Dr. O'Fannin, number three, the St. Peters University, will any of our staff be teaching any of these courses?
Yes.
I have a question. Number two, we had one of these at the meeting last, the last meeting for the middle school, is this a change of venue?
I don't think so.
It's a different group.
I think it's a different, yeah, it's a different group. I, I know this has been going back-
But it was the same day. It was the same day, so we have a different, it was the same day, different-
After meeting, after having a meeting with the folks that represent the various
groups, their holy day falls within a certain period of time, so yes, it may be the same date, but they're using a different building because they, they worked amongst themselves to work out some problems that they had.
So are we renting both buildings?
Yes, if it was on last meeting-
On last agenda, it's the exact same words except the school is different.
Is it the same, same Indian cultural?
What's the intercultural, black, T V theme?
No, this is, this is the Dawkaish Temple, the other one, I believe, was Asia, which is the-
No, it says Dawkaish Temple, Saturday, October fifth, six to two a.m.
What, last week?
Several middle school.
Last one?
Last meeting. So are they moving out of the little school into there, or are we having-
I would have to check, and if that's the case, then I didn't look back, so we would have to check on that.
Well, this is what's in the minutes, I, I have the minutes, not, I don't have the agenda. I'll list it with a typo in the minute.
I have a question. On number three, how many of our staff take these classes at St. Peters?
The last few years, not many, but it's really dwindled.
And do we, do we know what the discounted rates are?
Yeah, it's about, I believe it's about, from their tuition, I believe it's about four hundred dollars. I think they, they charge over a thousand.
I think they match with Rutgers charges.
Yeah, now we, we match the Rutgers rate when we have that, and we've had quite a few people get certified for that program. Now, we're trying to push for some reading specialists, because that's what we're really pushing for, and that's one of the, that's one of the things, not that I would, I can't teach reading specialists, but that's an area that we, of need, guidance is an area of need, continue with administration supervision, when we have an emergency, put people through those programs, but it's dwindled, it's dwindling, if we use two classrooms, it's a lot.
Is it just for our teacher?
No, no, anybody can come in, but it's, originally, five, six, seven years ago, I would say the classes were twenty, twenty-five, it's kind of dwindled down to a few now, and the program is, if they need to add some different courses in different areas, rather than just administration supervision.
Right, and I thought that a few years ago, alternate route was also here, wasn't it?
Yes, alternate route is also here.
But not now?
We do, we do that also occasionally, that's a, that's a big field, alternate route, they get quite a few people by alternate route, so that could be again, anybody, but they usually run that at St. Peters, but sometimes they do run it at the G W S.
Thanks, thanks. What are we doing with number two, are we pulling number two, or do we, do we know where this thing is located?
I would ask that you leave it as is, and I'll get back to the board tomorrow as to if there is a discrepancy between the two. There's a possibility of them using both buildings.
Okay. But if not, will we rescind approval for the other one at our next meeting, which is prior to the event? There's different, there's different organizations that work with the temple too, so it might be-
That's what I'm saying.
No, it's the same one.
No, but that's my men- There could be two, two different organizations within the same group.
I'll find out.
There was an Asia one as well, that was a separate one.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, this one.
Okay, B finance, resolutions one through twelve are irregular resolutions, anticipated capital improvement, as listed, A through F to the various schools, the various projects, the security upgrades are basically doors and cameras in most of the buildings, making sure that every door is locked appropriately, according to code, as well as cameras and the other sub-explanatory, and this is to who vote our security program. Fourteen is the establishment of the following positions, again, this is for our position control, so that our position control manual is up to date, establishment of computer technician, again, this is for our position control manual. Donation of one wheelchair by Adele Goldenberg, the abolishment of, again, this is for position controller abolishing a grade one in Truman, and we're gaining a kindergarten because of all the students that are going into kindergarten in Truman, so we just have to, that's a, an accounting situation. Then talk about the water break roll contract, paper supply contract, milk contract, groceries, snacks, and a building new schedule as noted on pages eight and nine, number twenty-four, which is on number ten, page ten, is our tuition rates that come from the State Department, whether they be regular or special education, except the non-public funding for the thirteen, fourteen school year as noted, again, these numbers come from the state, approve a change order of the middle school for the ventilator upgrade, twenty-two thousand to change, and to approve a resolution to start the process of roof replacement at the Truman School, as noted in number twenty-seven. Number twenty-eight is a settlement between a retired member and the Cerebral Board of Education. Any questions with section B?
I have a question. The roof, this was, this is from the Capital Reserve?
At this point in time, there is no determination where it's coming from, this is just us applying to the state so that we can find out if we can get funding since they've put out another round of grants, so at this point in time, there is no determination where it's coming from.
Okay, I have another question on cafeteria financial report. On the first page of Sunday afternoon, it said, I don't know, it, the title on page one and two says the same thing, cafeteria board reports, who we are two thousand twelve thirteen, but on the first page, it says salaries fifteen thousand, and there's a profit of ninety thousand on the second page, which makes more sense, there's salaries in closing, which is the labor costs, which seem more reasonable, but then at the bottom, there's a different deficit of eighteen thousand dollars.
I believe one is the monthly report, and one, one, the first page is the monthly report that's issued-
Which month would that be?
June.
This would be June's report?
And the one is the year.
And the other one is year. So this is for the entire year?
Yes.
So we ended with a deficit of eighteen thousand dollars?
For her records, yes. She maintained her records in a different manner than I do for gap purposes, when you see mine-
What about your records, then?
You'll, you'll have to go to the board secretary's report, and I believe we finished off with a loss of about sixty thousand at the end of the year.
A loss of sixty, is that, so the deficit for this year is sixty thousand?
I believe that was the number.
Do you know what page yours is on?
Just give me a second as I find it. Since it's the closeout report, I have to see how it worked, it may have closed everything out, and it may not be here.
Is this secretary's report, this one that's, ends June thirtieth, is this the final report for the year, then all these numbers are cumulative for the year?
Closeout, yep.
Why is there such a deficit?
We ran a deficit, and we purchased the, the, and the, all of the technology for the new system.
I thought that was coming out of the surplus.
Right, it comes out of the surplus at the end of the year as a net number, but it shows that the net difference has a loss for the year.
So the, the loss for the year was the sixty, we still have a surplus in the account.
And what is that, that number should be in your report for us?
Yes, I'm trying to find the exact page. Since it's a closeout, you'll have to take the difference between numbers on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And I apologize, it's ninety-five thousand.
So it's a ninety-five thousand dollar deficit?
Yep, we had, yes, ninety-five thousand for the year.
Ninety-five thousand for the year.
You have to look at the differences between, or you can just look at page eight, it gives you the income up top, and it gives you the expenditures down below.
And where's the cumulative number?
It's closed out, because it's the June report, I close everything out, so you have to take the difference on those numbers.
So what is, what's, what is on surplus?
The current surplus is a hundred and ten, which is on page twenty-six.
All right, so this hundred and ten is the number that I should see in the audit report?
Hopefully, yes, that they agree to it.
Okay, all right. Because last year, when we discussed the prices at the cafeteria, you said you were going to do an analysis about us trying to lower the prices because we were running-
Right, and we discussed that, and like you said, we're going to stay with a flat rate since we ran out of, we're not going to increase since we ran a deficit this year, and we anticipate at this point, we're trying to, try to maximize working through our staffing to bring that deficit down, hopefully for a year.
Okay, and what was the cost of the equipment that we bought, do you remember?
I'm going to say roughly around sixty thousand dollars.
So even without that, we still would have had a deficit?
Yes, we still had a deficit, and we knew that throughout the year.
I have a question on number twenty-three, the costs for renting facilities, is that the same as last year, or is there an increase?
Two and a half percent increase. Okay, moving to section C, personnel, non-certified, we have two retirements, Beverly Nathan and Nancy Janikowski, I want to wish both of them, Nancy and Beverly have been long-time employees and done an excellent job, I want to wish them well and Godspeed during their retirement. Three is a, an adjustment in a hourly, in an hourly wage, next four are transfers, lateral transfers, and number eight is paraprofessional assignments as noted on pages twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and on page nine are some personnel that are being hired, part-time secretary and part-time bus aide, as well as some additional subsidies. Any questions with section D? With none, with none, moving to D, personnel, there's a, there's a few resignations as listed, there's one and two, and three, and four, and as previously approved, there's a child rearing leave, unpaid medical leave, some pregnancy leaves, all the way down to number ten, where we have a new start date for an individual teacher that was supposed to start October first, or somebody's dating earlier. Eleven is a transfer of a phys ed teacher from one school to another, twelve is also a transfer from one grade to another, which again goes on the physician roster, approval of a transfer of a resource room teacher, as noted on number thirteen, another Elaine Hall approving her to be the coordinator of her program, following salary adjustments as noted, or degree status changes, retroactively employment of the following personnel, the substitutes for the extended school year retroactively, and the staff members for the Saturday detention program as noted in number seventeen, on page seventeen. Moving to number eighteen is our dean of discipline, Megan Romero, Ms. Hyer also runs three days a week, in-school suspension program at the high school, middle school soccer, girls, coaching assignments as listed, and approve the following personnel, coaching assignments as also listed on number twenty-one. A split of the power school coordinators as approved, fifty percent each of the two individuals is noted, and personnel, these are personnel that are going to write the curriculum for new courses for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. Number twenty-four are our web assistants, and on pages twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, you have all new staff that are coming into the high school, middle school, and the elementarys. Number twenty-six is our substitutes, and number twenty-seven, I will read, it's in addition to the agenda. The Board of Education has requested to approve the employment of Amy Stubber, a supervisor of elementary education for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, effective on or about eight twenty-six thirteen, at the salary base of ninety-two thousand, which is step four in supervises B guide, plus longevity of twenty-five hundred, which is contractual total salary of ninety-four thousand by month. Any questions with that section?
I have a question.
Sure.
Twenty-seven, is that a ten-month or a twelve-month job?
It's a twelve-month.
Dr. O'Fannin, just a, a comment, I know that when you look at the agenda, and this is also for the board's information as well, you look and you see the, the resignations of staff, and I know that's causing some concern in the community, I know one of the individuals on here, and I'm not going to mention who it is, but one of the individuals who resigned here took a position in another district, and that individual is making nine thousand three hundred dollars more in that district than they are here. We've got another resignation which is coming, it's not on the agenda yet, because I don't think the letter has made its way to the board office, I don't know what that individual will be making in the district that individual is going to, I do know it's more, and when I pulled the salary guide for that particular district, the salaries start at about ten thousand dollars more. So I know as the community looks at this, they start thinking, well, there's something wrong with the district, there's a very good possibility it's just people looking to improve their lives and looking to, you know, get positions at, at a higher rate of pay. I think that's also all the more reason why, as a district, we've really got to have a very good culture in this district to make people want to stay and really make it personal, because, you know, we have to be a place where people want to come to work every day, especially given that, that salary disconnect. And I know it's a lot of times easy to say, well, if you didn't have so many administrators, you could pay your teachers more, well, even if you eliminated all of our principals, vice principals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, you know, director of facilities, their salaries and benefits don't total roughly six hundred times the nine thousand dollar gap of five point four million dollars, so it's, it's not that easy, it's going to take us a while to try to get those guides up so that we're on the same level with, with other districts, and with the tax cap that we have, it's, it's problematic, it basically means that within our own budget, we've got to start shifting resources in order to, to make that change. So I just wanted to point out those pieces of information.
Thank you, Syak.
I have another question. For twenty-seven, again, you, we had discussed the cost of this and that it wasn't budgeted, and you had said you'd get back to me on how we're going to fund it, budgetary, like where's the money coming from, because we didn't budget for this position?
Yes, we had budgeted some breakage for this, and I wasn't prepared to give you exact numbers, but I think we had discussed that a lot, it was coming out of breakage. This position, which is ninety-four, the person that took over for this individual, obviously is going to be a thirty or forty thousand dollar decrease in salary because it's an elementary position, as well as some of the breakage and some of the other areas that we've had for a number of these courses, and other people that are leaving, or that have resigned or whatever, that we're bringing in, and that came at a much higher rate, so we have some money in that. So this, this position actually, even though it's ninety-four, if you take on the new salary of the individual coming in that's going to replace this individual, you know, this, this person was making in, say, eighty-three, the individual that's going to come in is probably going to make around forty-five, forty-seven thousand.
So you think you're going to cover the whole thing still on the salary line?
On the break, on the breakage line.
Without taking it from somewhere else?
I don't think so, I don't, I think we'll be okay.
Agreed.
I, I'll be honest, I can't comment, I, with all the hirings that we still have, I, we have to update my spreadsheet to give you an exact breakage at this point.
Right now, we, we probably, this is a matter here, you're going into probably, right now, I've hired sixty-five people this year, my highest year was seven.
And do you think, like, the net of those sixty-five-
Definitely, it's, it's, you know, anybody who retires and you're putting somebody in, you're saving thirty-five thousand.
On page ten, page sixteen, number ten, we're covering that, it's a medical leave of absence, do we have to vote on that leave? Or, like you said, somebody's thrown out a medical leave, so we change the date for September first, because we had voted originally in October?
Right.
So do we vote on that medical leave?
I think this person, I don't want to mention the name, but I'm not, listen, it's in there, everything is in there, there's, it's, I don't want to mention the name, but it's in there.
Okay, because I remember the last time we voted on it in October, did you?
What's happening is, is we're trying to, we're getting so many, so many changes, we're just trying to move people around so that we don't make, you know, we don't move the teachers around so much that the children get affected, you know, they have three teachers, let's say, before December, so this is what we're trying to do, so we're jockeying people around.
Page twelve, number six, this, we wrote down with a new position, was that to replace the ten-month position that we used to have in that school?
I'm sorry, which one? Page twelve, number six?
Number six, no, yeah, page twelve, number six.
Yeah.
You said, it says there, new position, but was that the replacement of the full-time job?
You talking, the transfer of Delgado, that's number-
Right, but it says, it's right next to Samsung, it says, new position in parentheses.
It's not, it shouldn't be, it's not a new position, this is just a replacement of the, the individual that was there, who was a salary position, a while ago, we just didn't replace.
Right, but was that a ten-month job?
That was a ten-month.
So, so this is a new one, and did we do away with the ten-month job?
Technically, yes.
So this is a part-time replacement, a full-time job?
It's an hourly, we don't like to call it part-time, it's an hourly, it's a twenty-nine point five, it's almost the same amount of hours. Okay, D, personnel certified. I think we went through that.
Policy.
Okay.
Twenty-two.
Thank you. All right, policy, we're going to do some shredding against health records, which we have to approve, policy thirty-five, forty-two, thirty-one for lunch, free and reduced lunch, we have to follow that policy according to the Jersey Department of Education regs, emergency crisis plan, endemic plan, which are in our offices, integrated pest management, memorandum of agreement, which is in our offices, and the job descriptions as noted on pages twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, all being approved. Page twenty-six is a new job description for the financial bookkeeper, as noted, any questions with that section?
On number five, we got the integrated pest management accord from Mr. Cantalana, that doesn't mention the tick problem at the high school fields, it does at the middle school, but there's nothing in there about the high school fields.
The only thing that I can assume-
Softballs through softwares.
I, I, only thing I can assume is that if I had said middle school, but it was all inclusive, I, I don't know why you would have, I would have known earlier, Mr.-
Yeah, I only saw it, Lee.
I don't know the answer.
We'll take a look at it and get back to you. These are all required reports. Moving to section F, curriculum, servant harassment intimidation and bullying record, thirteen and fourteen textbook, and supplemental book list. Number three is our hours for regular early dismissal and delayed opening, as noted on page twenty-eight. Any questions with that section?
I just have a question, the last one, the financial bookkeeper position, what changed in the job description?
What I've done is I've beefed up the position somewhat in reference to working specifically with the special services department because of all the new regulations, there, I'm looking for someone that can work directly with special services, someone to work with filing of monthly reimbursement forms with the state and things of that nature, those are really the two main, two main items that were in there, and elimination of some job description requirements that talked about equipment that's no longer in existence.
Okay, moving to G, the class trip to Disney is May twenty-ninth, the activities of several Waldenmore High Schools is listed on page twenty-nine, and page thirty, tentative schedule and practices as noted on pages thirty and thirty-one, any questions? With none, moving to H, these are the lunch prices, breakfast prices, cafeteria price list for the high school, middle school, elementary, and the adult prices. Number four, on page thirty-four is a waiver of transportation, is noted, addendum to the transportation contracts, number five, number six, number seven is a negotiated joint venture with transportation, is noted, number eight is the use of some buses as part of our orientation, we'll try to use two buses rather than four, but we're putting four just in case, I don't know why we have four, but I asked for four, and it's in here, but I think we could probably earlier do two, approve the use of three buses for the affair as listed on number nine. That concludes my report, that's my done.
Dr. O'Fannin, number eight, can you tell us what is the value of that?
The value of that, I remember when I came to Cerebral, I basically- The value of that, I remember when I came to Sable, they basically show you the community, Mr. Mack and I talked about this. It shows to some of the areas where unfortunately, some of the devastation that was done in the town. Also, they take a look at the different areas in the town, they do a little historical background. It shows a little bit of camaraderie. It allows the people maybe to buy in a little bit more into the town because some of these people never have seen Sable. It's a big town. I never realized how big it was when I came here. There are certain areas that I'm still probably haven't seen. And all we're trying to do is to give them a little historical background to what it's like and to give them an opportunity to just maybe buy a little bit more into the community. This is what was done years past, this is not, nothing new. We stopped it about six or seven, eight years ago for whatever reason, and the committee decided to add, to put this into effect again.
What committee?
The committee that puts this together, the mentoring.
The mentor, maybe, and...
Two things, on that same topic, do we do an evaluation of the new teachers? Let me rephrase that. Do the new teachers evaluate the orientation program?
Yeah.
Is that something, just something considering, you may want to put that in place at the end so that they can give feedback on the value of the orientation and also on the tour of the community and see if it's something that is of value to them. And, you know, you can plan it for next year.
Actually, the committee, this was recommended by the committee, this was not recommended by me, this was something that they had asked.
Right, so it's something like on the bus, it's like a...
Yeah, yeah. They gave you like a little historical background, I mean, they talk about the town.
They'll take them around to old schools.
Mr. Bishada's going to do it.
Yeah, she's going to ask you who's going to do the three-hour tour.
It's not a three-hour tour.
It's honestly, it takes about, I think they've allotted about an hour for it, an hour or a little bit more. And it's just a way to literally orient them to the community. If they're not from Sable or, let's say, if they work at the high school, they don't know where the different elementary schools are.
So, do you pull in new teachers that were from previous years that never got this tour, or is it just this year's new teachers?
It's just this year's new teachers.
We got that five, boss.
Well, I know, I know.
We pulled everybody.
You said you didn't do it for a while.
It's part, we have a whole day of orientation for new teachers where they learn, where they get to meet our fully administrators and so on. They get to, they learn about how a school ought to be talking about Danielson and the evaluation model. They'll have some time, they'll play some icebreakers and so on. And this is just part of literally giving them an orientation to Sable, not just Sable schools, but the town. Because we want them to become an active part of the community. And honestly, for those of you who were in the National Night Out a couple of weeks ago, if you could see how many organizations from our school participated in that night out, I mean, I think three-quarters of the tables there were manned by people who were committed with the school. And, you know, we want to, it's all these kinds of things that we're hoping will, you know, get people to stay here and want to come and stay here, so.
Any other questions? Yeah, just one more, and I missed this when I reviewed the agenda initially. The breakfast, the reduced price for the breakfast is, that's not a typo, it is a free breakfast, there's no reduced option, it's either you pay or it's free?
I believe so.
Okay, it just looked weird that it was reduced and it was zero.
That's true.
It's very reduced, yes.
Any other questions on the superintendent's agenda?
I have a question. When do you think we will move toward the online payment for lunches and...
At this point in time, I'm hoping sometime in January, but I'm not looking to jump the gun until we have the new system in place, the staff trained and understanding how the new system works, and then we're going to look forward to the online process. My goal is hopefully around January, but once the system is up and running and the staff has actually worked with it a month or two, I'm going to speak to Ms. Jenkins and find out how everyone is, are they comfortable, and then start doing the process of doing the online process.
Any other questions? Seeing none at this time, I'll go up to public, any questions, comments on the agenda? Be mindful that it will open up to the public again for any business that may come before the board. Anyone from public? Please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Rubio, 10 Adam Boulevard. I just wanted to add a little bit about the new teacher orientation because it's something that the SEA has worked in partnership with the district for quite a number of years. And Dr. Alfano was correct that we did let this tour go by and kind of leave it to the mentors to give a view, at least two ways to get to school in case there's a traffic jam on more of the streets. That was always the prime, one of the things that we asked them to do. But I think it's a great addition, I'm glad we're bringing it back. I'm one of the people that have, is going to be on the bus, and it's one of the ways that actually got involved with the association to begin with. New teachers are a huge focus for us. We want to give them a good start, and I'm proud of this, I'm proud to be part of the program, and I will see you all there next week.
Thank you, Kat.
Thank you, Ms. Rubio. Anyone else? Still coming? You're next. Sir? Kim, still. Is it, can we put some lights on?
Barbara Kill-Cummins, 22 Shands Street. My question is about the busing for the Decatur's Temple. I think I've asked my questions to Mr. Romano, he's leaving.
He's going to...
Put the lights on, he can hear you. He's not leaving because you came to him, Mike.
You never know. I think I have that effect on certain people. Much better mic. Thank you. Not else, especially when you're old, you can't see. My question is, again, insurance, I think you were going to look into it, do we carry insurance for anyone getting hurt or whatever? Because these are out-of-towners, the majority that belong to this temple do not reside in Sable, will come to this and are bused, and I just wanted to know...
They are covered by our insurance since they are outbuses, out drivers.
So, if someone gets hurt on the school property, we're covered, our insurance?
Yes, we're, they're making use of outbuses, so we're basically renting out outbuses, so they're covered.
And on grounds itself at the schools, in the parking lots? Because I saw quite a few things that have happened once before.
It all depends on the nature of, it all depends on the nature of the accident as to who's actually, who's covered and who isn't. Each accident is an individual act in itself, so to make a blanket statement, all things are covered, I cannot do that, each one is an individual thing that you have to look at.
Okay, there was also a list of positions and, I'm trying to find it now, who would you know, we lost it? And it's about positions, I guess, titles for jobs. And here I can't find it, bear with me. Pages...
24.
23.
23.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, I looked all over this place. They have cafeteria and whatnot, but whatnot need was custodians. We have a director of facilities, a supervisor of buildings and grounds, and assistant supervisor, and a maintenance supervisor. These are more, I know, the director of facilities and then the supervisor of buildings and grounds. Who is that?
We only filled two of the four because these are listed, doesn't mean we filled, we only filled the director of facilities and the assistant supervisor.
So, these are positions that are open, budgeted, or whatever?
No, no, these are just job descriptions that we have in case if we want to fill these slots. Not every one of these slots are filled. These are just the job descriptions.
But Mr. Penciano fills both of those roles, is the director and supervisor.
Well, he's still, his job description is under the director of facilities.
But he's also...
Right, yeah, but it's not four people for those four jobs.
Well, I have something else to discuss, but it's not part of the agenda, so we'll be done.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
As far as the agenda is concerned, I just had...
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Kristy Pascal, 52 Kirch Street.
Yes, sir.
Just according to the agenda, on page 35, you have contracted keyboard order body for 12, looks like 12 routes to the school. I was just wondering, is a keyboard order body supplying buses to be transported?
Yeah, I think there are contracts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the agenda, I will open up again for the public for any business that comes before the board. Seeing none, accept a motion to accept the policy superintendent's report. Any second? And I need roll call.
This is back.
Page 36, number 9, I'm going to go back.
That's it? Mr. Bishada?
Page 36, I'll be voting now, the rest is yes.
Number 36, sir?
You just said page 36.
Page 36, number 9.
Mr. Budzinski?
Page 36, also number 9, everything else is fine.
Mr. Sya'at? Yes. Mrs. DePenta?
Yes.
Mrs. Rattuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Scrub?
Yes.
And Mr. Alphano? Yes. Mr. Sya'at, the Delegates of New Jersey School Boards Association, can you give us a brief update on this?
Sure, I'll try. A couple of things. First of all, I was down at the National School Boards Association President's Retreat, I was asked to do a presentation down there, but the thing that I think is relevant to us is I saw a great speaker there. The closing speaker of the event was a Congressional Medal of Honor winner, and a Congressional Medal of Honor is given to, you know, someone who's exhibited extreme valor in combat or in a military situation.
Highest, yes.
It's the highest national award. There are only 79 living Congressional Medal of Honor winners. These individuals have come together and formed a society, you know, the Society of Congressional Medal of Honor recipients, and their mission is to promote character education. And we had a gentleman speak to us who was an awardee of this prestigious award, and I kind of expected here in Congressional Medal of Honor, you know, a true military leader, you know, the presence, the, you know, the whole leadership piece, and what really struck me is this individual was probably as humble and as soft-spoken as I'd ever seen. And he talked about this program, and the more I listened to the character education program that I had, I started thinking about the fact that we are Sable Warm Memorial High School, we are the home of the bombers, and the characteristics of this program, the fact that the curriculum is free, I looked at the curriculum online, that was available online, it seems like it could be a very good fit for us. I'd just like to know if the board is interested in, and I want to very clearly state this, having the administration evaluate it to see if it is a fit for us. I'm not proposing that we change what we currently do, we may end up doing that, we may end up integrating it into what we currently do, we may end up saying it's not a fit for us. But I'd just like to know if the board is interested in pursuing something like that that seems to fit very well with our community and our culture and support our goals of character education.
And have them come in and like do a presentation?
Well, no, I would have, we'd ask Dr. Alfano to probably put together a committee of his team to explore it, look at it online. It does have a technology component, it's got, you know, video streaming of these award recipients who can talk to the class. You can have some of these individuals come in and speak directly to the class, and it really integrates the history component along with the character education component. And again, it may not fit for us, but just from what I saw, it seems like it's got a possibility to be something that we would at least want to explore.
It's a great idea, and I've seen these guys, and a lot of things they talk about is dedication, commitment, integrity, teamwork, all those types of things. And what they try to do is take those elements that have made the military a superior force to relate that to everyday life and society. It's a good program, it is free, and they started this a couple of years ago. I heard a couple of, they speak about it, and just yesterday at the Patriots, someone said Patriots game, they had a lot of, went there too, talking about those types of things. Yeah, this is an old writer, and I, I'm embarrassed, I missed the opportunity. But yes, it's absolutely a great program, and they do have a CD. I'll see if I can get you, get a copy of it, which kind of introduces the program and those types of things.
Anyone opposed to proceeding in that direction? All right, so Dr. Alfano, I'll give you the web address, and again, if for whatever reason it doesn't fit with us, this is not a mandate to go on a massive change here, this is to evaluate something that may be, may be good for us. And the last point I want to bring up, we talked at the last meeting about the evaluation piece and changing from the, what was supposed to be one long and too short to too long. We found out tonight that Mrs. Zeichner had followed that up, and it turns out that by the time we had the meeting and discussed this at the last meeting, the deadline to apply for a waiver had already lapsed. And apparently, everyone that we've spoken to, no one was aware of it, and even when she called the Department of Education or the county superintendent, the county superintendent was not aware of it, but after researching it, they found out the deadline had lapsed. I am going to reach back out to New Jersey School Boards and to the member of the State Board of Education who was advocating for this and see if we can get a waiver on the deadline to apply for the waiver on the evaluation process, and we'll see what happens. It's not optimistic, but we can still give it a shot, and that concludes my report.
Under current reports, any committees meet? Okay, redistricting committee had two meetings, one was today, and the other one, I think, was July 30.
30.
As you recall, a couple of minutes ago, we decided to seek some outside counsel, come in and take a look at the way our district is configured, both from an infrastructure perspective and from an educational perspective. We met with both of those individuals. Dr. Gary Bone, who's a superintendent of schools in another district, the lady's name today?
Dr. Lisa Yatjuns.
Okay, who's assistant superintendent in another district, that met with the curriculum, the redistricting committee just to give them some leads and what to follow and what we were looking for, and what data we would like to be able to make in a formal decision. Our meetings were very productive, they kind of got a general view of the issues here in Sable, what we were looking at. We provided them the latest copy of the demographic report that was done by the borough, that was incorporated into Borough's master plan, also a list of all developments that are going in town, what the population's going to look at, to also include the 2,000 unit development at the point that's going to be piecemealed over the next 10 to 12 years, and then to look at the educational component of how we educate elementary school children in the 4-5 configuration. After that meeting, we had asked that when they thought that their analysis would be complete, they said about 90 days from the kickoff, which I will consider the kickoff today, which put them right about between Thanksgiving and the Christmas holiday. I asked them that once they come up with their analysis, that they brief everybody at the same time at a public meeting, we will invite the public, we'll announce it as a special redistricting meeting, and they come and kind of give us analysis. I think this was a good step for someone who's outside the district that does not have a set paradigm, to take a look at what we're doing and to see if we can do it better or what we're doing is right, and I think that's the smart way to go, and I think it's really a minimal cost, it costs us about $6,000, I think, which is a pretty good deal, the amount of time and the research that they're going to do for us, so. Again, when it happens, we'll announce it as soon as we find out, we'll have ample time to notify the public, and have everybody come that has an interest in the redistricting concept. Anything that you ladies can add that I missed?
I think they were going to reach out to the staff as well.
Yeah, we asked them, they asked us if we wanted to appoint them to some people to look at, whether it's the SEA leadership or it was the teachers, and we told them we didn't want to do that, let them just go through the district and talk to whoever they want to talk to, so, you know, we can't be accused of stacking the deck, so just go through the schools and just talk to whoever you want to talk to. They're going to look at the infrastructure, they're going to visit all the schools, they're going to talk to administrators, they're going to talk to teachers, and that will be part of their report, so I think that's the best way to do it. And we will all be briefed at the same time on what their analysis is, and then we'll hopefully be able to make a decision and finally put this to rest, so. That will be forthcoming, 90 days from today, or thereabouts. That's all I have, the committee reports, any board questions about that? Okay, just a couple items for discussion. First thing I want to talk about, before that meeting of the 30th, I met with Ms. Zeichner because Ms. Zeichner kind of took the ball from our displaced students. As you know, if you live in this town, the hurricane was devastating and it caused, at that time, 150 students to be displaced. So, we had students that lived in Sable during the school year and that had dispersed to other area towns, and we kind of got our arms around that and worked out transportation so we could pick them up and bring them to the school year. Now that, you know, this school year is over, we still have students that are displaced. We have a number of residents, if you've been following the news, that a buyout program has been approved, I think we have a number of residents that are going to take that option, but that buyout process is not going to happen probably till the fall, so what do we do for this beginning school? Um, but that buyout process is not going to happen probably till the fall, so what do we do for this beginning school year? So we're assuming all those people still Sayo residents, and we're gonna treat them as such, and we're gonna transport them and do all those things until late, um, final week. So Ms. Zeigner has, um, contacted, uh, that was affected by the storm, and there's a lesser number now. A lot of people relocated back to town, some people moved permanently. Uh, but Ms. Zeigner, if you could just give us a little update on where those numbers are, and, and if you see any poles in the tent that we may have to deal with.
Well, right now, we have, um, out of district, we have several families that are still displaced and living out of district. Um, we have two different families who are living in Old Bridge right now. One family has three children and another family has one child. And we will be transporting those children back to school here in Sayo for that, uh, for the school year while they're still in the state of waiting to find out what happens with the, the buyouts. We have another student who's living in Biscataway temporarily. That student, the parent does not want transportation for that child. The child will continue to attend our school. And we do have one child who is living in South River, who will be attending our school, but we will be providing transportation for that child. So we have, um, basically five students that we will be transporting from out of district. One student who is living out of district but does not require transportation. Several of the people that were living out of district have decided to stay permanently in those towns, and they have either withdrawn or are in the process of withdrawing their students. Um, we have about seventeen students who are in some kind of temporary housing situation, but living here in Sayo. Okay, so they were able to find other housing arrangements in Sayo, but only one of them requires different transportation, because that child's at an elementary school, so we're transporting that child from across town to his home elementary school. The others are all at the UES middle school or high school, so transportation's not going to be impacted in that way. So basically, we have, it, it appears we have six students that we're transporting in an out-of-ordinary way. And that's down from about a hundred and fifty students that we had right out of CMB.
And, um, you know, that takes care of this school year, and then the next school year will reveal each individual case as, uh, as that, uh, that occurs. And I, I think, um, you had your arms around this from the beginning, I, I think we took care of. Um, I, I had communicated with Fran O'Connor many times, she has my cell phone number. She calls me with any questions or concerns, and she's kind of been the spokesperson for the WebAvenue community anyway. I know there's other areas in town that are affected too, but she has their ear. And, um, she knows to call me if there's any concerns, questions, the information I had given her was your information, your contact, your phone number, cellphone, email address, if they're gonna contact you. And then if, um, they're not feel satisfied, they certainly have my number as well. But I haven't gotten any calls, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Well, yeah, and if anyone knows of anyone, or anyone asks you questions about anything, really just ask them to call me, because in many cases, every circumstance is a little bit different, but, you know, we're certainly, we're, we're working with everyone. And trying to keep the kids here.
Okay, Mrs. Scrapp, your word.
Is that regardless of whether they owned or rented?
Yes, yes, they are still considered, they're still considered homeless.
Any questions? And lastly, can you give a little, rapidly elaborate a little bit more on, on the HIB analysis? Because I know that's something that we really took the ball and ran with when that first came out, and, uh, and our numbers are significantly reduced, and that's either because we've become much more proficient in investigating, or the kids have gotten word that, you know, this is not something that we're gonna tolerate.
Right, I think, um, the report that was presented earlier in the board report is required, we have to do it twice a year, and it gives the half-year numbers basically from January through the end of June. And as you see, we had a total of sixteen confirmed HIB incidents. For the first half of the year, which was from July first, of course, we don't get many or any over the summer through December thirty-first, we had ten. So for the entire school year last year, we had twenty-six incidents that were confirmed as being harassment, intimidation, or bullying. That's out of sixty-eight that were reported. The sixty-eight were investigated, twenty-six were confirmed. The pre, just to give you an idea, comparing to the previous year, which was the first year that this law came into effect, we had about a hundred and ninety-one or a hundred and?
Eighty-eight.
What, we had one hundred and eighty-eight incidents reported in the first year. Of that, ninety-one were confirmed to be hit. I think, as Mr. McEnown said, I think that it's, the sharp drop-off is due to a number of different things. I think during the first year, everyone, as soon as they heard the word bullying, everyone was very quick to, to use that term, because there was so much in the news about this new law. And of course, once something is reported as bullying, it must be investigated as such. And I think in the schools, we were doing a lot of reporting of things, and also, you know, children were, we were doing a lot, talked to the children about it. But I think also we've had a lot of very positive programs going on in the schools, which has really helped and really made the children aware of what is considered bullying and ways that they should treat other children.
And I think, I think, um, the people finally realize, and I was not, I'll tell you the truth, I was not a fan of, of this policy in the state, man, daily, uh, but after seeing it go here in another district, I, I, I think it works. I think that the consequences, if you're determined to be a bully, um, are, are significant. And I think parents, when it first came out, were asking their kids if they were being a bully. And now they're asking their kids, are you a bully? Once they realize, you know, what the consequences are for those things. I think it, you know, it's a good program, and hopefully those numbers will continue to go down. I don't think we will ever have schools free of, of this, but I think we've significantly reduced that number.
And then, and we also had to submit to the state, each of the schools had to commit a self, to, um, complete self-assessment on how they thought they, their individual schools did on enacting different aspects of the type of bullying law. And all of our schools either met or exceeded the expectations in all areas, so, um, I think, I think we're doing a very good job here, and I think we're, you know, continuing to manage to work.
Mr. McEnown?
Yes.
Question, um, on your HIB report, it doesn't show here, but over a two-year period, how many repeat offenders have we had?
Not, not a whole lot.
Well, I, I do most of the reports, I would say a handful. Well, you have some that two, three, four times.
Oh, three or four times, and what course of action have we done with the repeat?
They could be disciplined, they could be suspended.
I've seen out of school suspensions and all.
But, Tom, I think one of them actually came before this, remember?
Correct.
Right. You know, I understand that. Last resort, but I, that's a good question, I remember.
We, the, the cases this year, Thomas, are the question of repeat offenders, very few, very few. Maybe, like I said, two or three. Years passed, the year before that, there were, there were multiple, some, some, some students were three, four times involved. But I think now, as we're saying, you know, the educational piece, the fact that we don't tolerate it, um, there's a lot of counseling component to it. Um, I know the counselors do a very good job at it, and if we have to go further, we go further in counseling.
And of all those reports, I only recall two parents that came to make an appeal. One was of a kid bullied, one was of a bully. So that's pretty good numbers.
And, and I think, I think the children have, you know, we've done a lot to educate them, and they have become much more aware of their own behaviors and the kinds of things that can be construed.
I think the staff too, is able to recognize and add those things off before they actually come to report the incident. Good, okay. Any other questions? Mr. Bishaw?
No, I, I have a continuation of something else.
Okay, go ahead.
Two things. First of all, I mentioned it before, uh, we received a, a grant from the Arab Emirates of about seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for technology, if I'm correct on the number. Have we processed this money, or are we going to use this in technology this year? Or is it a long-term implementa, implement, say, implemented over a long period of time?
It's, it's seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and we are going to?
It was off my floor.
Right, and you know what, it's funny, because I kept, one day when Mr. DeAndrea and I were talking about it, I kept saying seven ninety-two also. But, um, it, we're going to be using it this year. We're kind of playing phone tag, because we have one question concerning some of the paperwork about it. We are, um, we are planning to purchase Chromebooks for the use by students, which is, it's a Google-based laptop. And, um, we may need to, the question has to do with whether or not we need to increase our bandwidth and some of our infrastructure. That's one of the things they stated in the grant paperwork, talked about that, with a certain number bites per, per student, per minute. So we're looking to get that clarified, with how much of it we must spend, if we must to get the infrastructure up to what the requirements are. The rest of it will be spent on devices for the students and on some, on professional development, for the teachers on using these devices.
To the reason I asked, uh, the finance committee this past year appropriated X amount of, um, tablets, I believe, was it Mrs. Batkov, tablets or?
Both, both, we had laptops and laptops.
Is it Parker, is it the Parker testing?
Parker testing, that was laptops, we had laptops.
And can, the reason I ask, because that's going to be mandated in the year fourteen, fifteen. For the, and can any of that money be used towards that to supply the necessary?
Right, well, we budgeted, we budgeted for, um, for Chromebooks to be used for park testing, and we're going ahead and purchasing those out of the local budget. This, what we're looking to do with the Chromebooks from the grant would be, in addition to what's purchased through the local budget, and these Chromebooks will be able to be used for the park testing. So that will, that will help us with that.
We're more capable than the iPad, but what is, what is their cost related, compared to an iPad? Is this similar?
No, no, it's, it's considerably less than Chromebook, I believe, is about two, device itself about two hundred and forty-nine dollars, if I'm not mistaken. And then we figure the, we're gonna need a mouse and headphones, so I, I think we figured about three hundred and twenty-five.
So they're not tablets?
No, they're not tablets. They are, they are laptops. Um, and that's what we were going, that's what we were purchasing with the local funds that were budgeted.
So the seven ninety-six is gonna be additional Chrome laptops?
Yes, yes, and whatever infrastructure we'll need to support all that. Um, we're figuring it could be, uh, two thousand additional laptops. It could be, so.
Okay, thank you.
You too. Mr. DeAndrea, somebody dropped the ball. Evidently, we've had practice sessions on all our fields over here. There's no porta-pockets.
I don't even know who's responsible for making sure they're there, Mr. Bishaw.
Well, I, I don't think it's you, but I mean, the, let's put it, the supervisor of, of, uh?
Buildings and ground.
No, physical education.
I'm not even sure, I don't think those porta-johns show up until the?
The reason I say, because I had a couple of parents.
The schools are open, the schools are open.
Ring my phone before me and tell me that, uh, there's certain individuals that are using sides of buildings for restroom facilities.
Can't they come inside the building?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever brought them in until the game started, because the building is open.
Actually, the buildings are open for students.
The reason, the reason we have the porta-johns at the games is we don't want everybody coming into the buildings.
But the issue is that there's individuals that are lazy and?
Well, then their parents need to talk to them.
Just watch, this beauty campus.
Could you check into that, please, to make sure we have the adequate facilities?
And I believe they don't show up until the games start. The students, any student that has, can have access to the building at this point in time.
That's why we approved that overtime for the practice schedule.
Send an email to the athletic director saying?
The porta-pockets.
Yeah, we use, use the athletic facilities.
Sir John.
Are you anything else, Mr. Bishaw?
That's it, that's it, that's enough.
Okay, at this time, I go above the public, any business that may come before the board? Now. Please state your name and address of residence.
Uh, Sophia Penney, fifty-four Kier Street. I actually have three questions, you can kick me out.
Two more, one.
The first one is the HIB, um, incidents. That's sixteen for all the schools in the district?
Yes.
Really, and it doesn't say here what schools had the incidents. Is it mostly the high school, is it, like, it doesn't?
It's spread, it's spread across.
It's spread, spread across. But it seems like a long number.
That's, that's, remember, that's confirmed, that's confirmed. We had sixty-eight for the entire year.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, that seems like a long number too.
So maybe that, at that time, you might have had thirty-five or forty. So we averaged about seven, uh, a month last year, total, each month.
That, that we had to investigate?
That we had to investigate, and only maybe two and a half were actually confirmed.
And, and the sixteen are just from January through June? There were ten, there were ten for the first half of the year.
Okay.
Okay, the total of twenty-six.
Okay, and then the other thing is the redistrict, the redistricting thing. Um, you guys mentioned you, you hired a consultant, which is a good idea, but I'm just curious as to why. Originally, you had made the decision, and then, was it because of backlash from the parents?
No, no, that's a good question. That's a fair question. We, we had a committee, my input was, I had a committee of four people. Um, and the record, that committee was gonna look at everything and then recommend it. This committee was stuck at two-two. Um, uh, and we decided, uh, that we probably need somebody from the outside. With a different perspective, to give us some information.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We thought the relative fee for that was, was well worth it. Um, the parents, um, depends who you talk to, um, some supported, some don't. A lot of them just worried about, it might move, and my kids don't own the same school, they left. Um, we're gonna have parents here again, um, so they understand the full thing of it. Um, the issues are overcrowding at certain elementary schools and how to alleviate that. And that's where one of the recommendations was that we can take all our schools and go K five, which would alleviate the problem in my concern. And another member of the committee was, what is the educational benefit of doing that? So the piece that's really important to me, and I'm only one vote, is the educational aspect. Um, I, I have a report here, um, from the state on how our elementary schools and all our schools are doing. We're doing very well compared to schools in our district factor group and within the state. So that has to factor, you know, so. Since we were split, we thought someone could come outside and, and, and look at it and say, hey, this is the right way you're doing it, or hey, this is a better way.
Will you be going by the recommendation then?
Um, depends on what it is. If the recommendation is, um, you know, invest thirty million dollars in building of the school, we'd say, no, and that's an extreme. My question is, it's gonna weigh heavy. Um, it may, maybe me change my mind depending on what they say. But I think this is a good thing to go out there and say, look, um, this is a big decision. This is probably the biggest decision that, that this board is going to make in most of our tenure, on how we change the paradigm and how we educate the kids at that degree level. Um, and I, I think getting this information is gonna be very beneficial. Lisa says to everybody, hey, look, we went out there, we got as much information as we can before we made the decision. So that Lisa, that I can, as a parent to you, say, hey, why did you make that decision? I can give you some information why I did that. And that's just based on my own bias and opinion, so.
And then the third is, um, I received a notice in the mail a couple of days ago. My daughter's bus, which used to be yellow, is now going to be green. I have no idea, I don't know if anyone here knows anything about that. Um, I, I heard that they're now going to pick up the people in Laurel, the kids in Laurel Park are combined with Woodside, and I just, maybe, I just want an explanation as to what's happening.
So why?
I, I also received that letter, I saw Mrs. Shemlock today, and do you know anything about it, do you know?
Um, so with green, we're talking about color of the bus and not the emissions coming?
No, you're right, you're right. Just the color of it.
Right, right, sorry.
It's a color.
Oh, okay.
And Mrs. DePinto, you can jump in there.
I think I'll let the experts answer this.
What that was, was our transportation department just ensuring that we run as efficient as we can to ensure that we're picking up kids in the best fashion possible, so. There were some changes based on location and the number of students on the bus.
So, so, so some people may have different bus stop then?
Yes, I, I have a different bus stop. I spoke to Mrs. Shemlock today, I actually just ran into her, and I asked her about the letter, and she said what happened was there was less in Woodside and more across town and less in Laurel Park. So she combined parts of Woodside and parts of Laurel Park together, and they will run together. Instead of sending parts of Woodside across town with the other section that needed more busing, we got combined with Laurel Park. It was just for filling up buses.
Less time on the bus. So it doesn't change the timing?
No. No, it would have changed the timing if, if we got put with the other side of town that needed more busing. So to keep the kids less time on the bus, she combined the areas that were closer together.
Okay, so the other thing I heard is that, you know, for parents who work and drop off their kids, let's say, at a babysitter, and you're allowed to fill out an application or something, a form, where your kids can take that bus stop? I heard that that's not allowed anymore, is that true?
Transit, transit. Just approved about twenty of them.
Providing their space for us.
Oh, okay, so that stands, that stays, so everything stays the same as it was before, however, it's just combining. Okay. All right, I know there's other people here. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
And any other questions, you can email Miss Shemlock directly, the transportation director.
How do you spell her last name?
S H, S H E D L O C.
I'm sorry, S H E?
S H- S-H-E-D as in David, L-O-C-K. Yeah, and if you go on, on a, on a district website, there's a link to Transportation, and you can see her.
Right, I will, okay, I'll see her name, yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Kristy Basco, 54 Kier Street. I believe Sophia was explaining my, my situation. My friend, I have two friends that are in Saro that their daughters and my son go to the same school. They have to go, one works in the city, one works down the shore. My wife watches the children in the morning so they can get on the bus so they don't have to take time off of work. For the past two years, the one girl has been getting on our bus stop at, on our street, and my son last year started, joined her in that school, in the same bus stop. My, that parent went to the school and applied for the new spot, and they told her that she's not able to go because that's not her bus stop, and that bus is overcrowded now that they did combine the two sides of town. So, it does directly affect us. They, they told, they told my wife that the only other option she has is to drive all of them to school every day and pick them up every day. They wouldn't be able to provide it because that's not her home that, that where the bus transportation would provide for them.
What's the difference in distance from stop?
We're talking about Dupont Street to Kier Street. They live on that side of town, we live right here and right by the school, but...
Dupont Street is by Coward Cemetery.
Right, right.
So, it, it does directly affect us because now my wife has to...
Did you speak to Transportation Director?
She spoke to Mrs. Shemlock, and she said that she would not be able to do that.
Because there's...
It's not due to the fact that the buses are now, based on the new way we're doing it, the buses are now full, so there are no available seats.
The problem is, is, is kids move up, and they come out of elementary school, they come out of U.S., go to middle school. Now, you say to yourself, you know, there was 15 kids out last year, there's only three kids this year. I think that was the genesis of consolidated groups.
The over, now, they're overcrowding the buses by combining them and trying to make it, but now they're not also giving ample space for the kids who were already on that bus. These two kids were already on that bus.
Going to the same school.
Going to the same school, it's been like that for the past year, and now they're telling them, "No, you can't do that anymore because now it's overcrowded," which I don't believe is fair.
Can you, can you give your name to Mr. DeAndrea, why don't you? Give your contact information and see if we can follow up.
I appreciate it.
Be sure you get them straight.
Barrett Campbell, I'm at, it's band camp week, it appears the air conditioning in the band room is still not working. Have an update on that?
I was unaware it wasn't working.
I think I brought it to somebody's attention about three weeks ago, it's 82 degrees here with, it's empty, put 59 kids in it to see what happens.
The only thing I can tell you is that, I know I spoke to Mr. Syak about it, and Mr. Pantoliano is aware of it. I cannot tell you if they're still waiting on a specific part or not, but work orders went to decide because the initiative of having the bathrooms at the middle school done, go back to working on work orders, so I cannot tell you the exact status, but I do know Mr. Pantoliano is aware of it.
How long is, how long is band camp? How, how long is band camp in Virginia?
Goes all this week.
All this week?
I, I think we need, it's been like a month.
Aggressive, I don't know the stats, that's why. I, I can't say definitely much.
Do you expect Mr. Pantoliano to take that work order and put it in?
I'm, I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow.
It, it's a humidity sensor, the water is filling up, and it's tripping the sensor, and even when it empties out, it doesn't get back in.
The band, the chorus room is nice and warm, once you take that out of there, it's put it to the band room.
I would have to check.
I made a comment about the facilities being open for people to use the restrooms. I told it today, all the restrooms are being cleaned at the same time. So, we had 59 band kids who, I don't know, maybe they had to use the side of the building, I don't know, but going forward, maybe you'd want to spec that.
At least you should be able to use the facilities. Sounds like an easy one to pick back.
Thanks.
So, is the band kids there? Anybody else on the phone?
Allison Hornbeck, 724 Drive. This is just a, asking Mr. McEnone if, for the Stampsol PTL, if you would be our board liaison for this year for our meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you just send me an email letting me know when the meetings are?
I will. We don't have a set date yet for the first one or for the, we will, they're...
I know Mr. Baughan emailed me, too, said he would like to attend as well.
Oh, great.
That's fine, if you just send me an email, when those dates and reviews, I can get, you know, transfer it to my account, and yes, I would like to do that.
Thank you.
It's easy. Mrs. Kilcombs, I know you've been chomping at the bit to get up.
Barbara Kilcombs, 22 Schmidt Street. My question is about hiring policy. We have a policy that was placed in effect, I think, from considering people from in the community first. And when we hire people, are, is it taken off a list? Mr. Alfano?
Dr. Alfano, hiring policy, and this, this...
I'm not sure what you mean by taken off the list.
I mean, there are people, there is a list submitted for opening up positions. I mean, this is like custodians, cafeteria, men row, and from the community, in other words, with our policy, they have to be considered first. Is that true?
I don't believe the policy says they're first.
That's not our policy.
The policy says if, if they're the most, if they are one of the most qualified residents of Saro will get the first choice, if they are most qualified.
And honestly, Ms. Kilcombs, our, our goal is to hire in those positions Saro people in, in, in everything we need for.
Well, one incident, a person was not rehired, I guess, for the contract put in. A person, community-minded, pays taxes, volunteered for Sandy, very active in the church and whatever, was replaced by a Polish woman from Woodbridge. Now, my husband knew this, my husband speaks to a lot of custodians, and what he told me was going to happen, happened. He knew before that her goal was to bring in Polish cleaning woman. Now, when the woman was trained, and was trained by two people, said, "No, I cannot do that, that's too heavy, I'm not moving that." Another one, "I might break my nails," whatever. And this, this has been going on with the custodians. You talk about morale. Morale is not just bad, and you have people leaving within teachers, you have them also in other departments. And also, there is a woman from Stanton Island. Now, no one's qualified to work in a cafeteria, but you had a person from Stanton Island who still lives in Stanton Island, working in your cafeterias. So, I'm just wondering, what kind of background checks do you do, and what kind of message are you sending out there? And I mean, you're talking about a custodian. A custodian is not a science teacher, it's not a math teacher, and the qualifications to be a custodian, and many people, the people my husband speak to, if they're reprimanded, they were taken to another shift, they were given the whole floor, all by this supervisor that was brought in. Apparently, that was let go from the Jackson School System and brought here. And it's amazing of how this transpires. So, this one person, when I spoke to Dennis, he said, "I have nothing to do with it." And I beg to differ with him, that's his department of responsibility, it does report to him. So, something's drastically wrong, and what you're doing is sending out a bad message community-wise, everything else. I mean, in this, believe it or not, you may not think, but this is part of the talk of the community, and I think it's a bad reflection on the management, the personnel management here. It's just another example, teachers, promotions, supervisors. Apparently, there was no one, no one qualified. Their contract out of our tax dollars, we pay for their certifications and pay for extra. When they get to that position of supervisor, a few applied, not even considered, everyone from the outside. "I was happy to see you promoted, Mr. Preston," but everyone else, one teacher left, I don't blame her, wasn't considered. And here, they're qualified, we're paying for their certification. Mrs. Iger, I mean, she's, she's a positive one, that she went up through the ranks with the certification, whatever process, but she's one of the very few. And I think that you're talking about leaving for more pay. Some people, I think, are just as grunged. So, I would go back and look at my personnel policy again. And Dr. Alfano, like I told you once before, maybe you should get that signed for your office, Saro residents need not apply. Thank you.
Never ceases to amaze me what comes out of your mouth.
Really?
Let me, let me, I'm gonna use a word that I know you don't like. It's called facts. Now, the last time you came up here, over the last eight years, I start to see the cycle of things. We're back on, there's a morale problem, and we don't hire Saro residents. We have approximately 829 employees in the Saro School District, 46.4% of them live in Saro. Of the people you talk about, which we consider to be non-certified staff, that's bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, 85.2% are Saro residents.
I'm glad to hear that.
So, if anybody's to say that, "Dr. Alfano, you should have a sign that Saro residents need not apply," I, I think this is...
Why didn't we apply, why didn't we hire someone from Woodbridge? There was nobody from Saro. I talked to a lot of people, they said they had their applications in, but instead, we hired a woman from Woodbridge.
Since I've been on this board, let me explain something. Since I've been on this board, I was pressured two times to hire Saro people, twice I got burned. If a Saro resident wants a job here and they're qualified, they're gonna get a job here. We have people that work as substitutes, who have been here as substitutes for many years, that happen to live in Saro and they moved to another town, they're good workers, and if that supervisor says, "I want to hire that person permanently," I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt to do that, okay?
Even if they're from out of state?
I've been around the schools here in the evening, I've seen custodians, I haven't seen many Polish women. When you, I know you made that sly remark, the lady that came from Jackson, I know what your implication is, let me tell you something about Miss Krasinski. When I saw her name on the agenda, I called the media, I said, "I'm not going to go there." She was in the school district, and I had something set up in the hallway, and she came down, custodian says, "You gotta get a hallway," and she was very rough with me, and I had words with her. And then I remembered her when she came to Saro, so I said to the media, "He said, "Milo, she's here, we really like her, we want to really hire her." So, if you go to Miss Krasinski and tell her whether I brought her here or not, I would have my... Okay, but she's worked out well. And remember, we brought her here.
Does she still have that same attitude?
I don't know.
That she had in Jackson?
Miss Kilcombs, I, I don't work in the school district here. I don't know, I don't see Miss Krasinski. I don't come in, and I don't, I don't do anything.
Well, maybe you should start talking to more employees, like my husband and I do with most, more people in there.
I, I do talk to a lot of employees, and they have to say, they say different things. Now, if you're telling me that people are leaving here because they're getting $10,000 more than other district, that's a reality.
I didn't say that, Mr. Syak said it.
Well, it, it, but it is, it is a reality.
Well, he said it. I didn't say it, I thought it was morale, not money.
Well, of course you thought it was morale. But if you care to, you know, get back, so granted that I'll say that this data is two years old, and we've had a fluctuation, so these numbers may have gone up, they may have gone down, but the very notion that the Saro Board of Education overtly goes out of the way, not to hire Saro residents, is, is an outrageous comment. And you have that pattern of doing that, coming here just...
Well, the pattern is mine is from experience, Mr. McEnone. One happened to be my neighbor, another one happened to be Shirley Dill's great niece, and wasn't even considered, and another one was a friend who lived in Patriot Homes, who moved to another part of Saro. But the application was never called for, an interview, never heard, nothing. And this person, one person graduated magna cum laude, I mean, East Brunswick scoffed them up, and Rowway scoffed up the other, but they weren't even granted an interview. So, it's not that I'm just picking this up out of a tree or out of my, you know what I mean?
When you mention two people out of 27% that are Saro residents. You mentioned supervisor, you mentioned Miss Iger, and I'm glad to see that you, you said something complimentary to her, that she came up through the ranks. Let me, let's take a look at our administrators that came up through the ranks. Ms. Mark, who's the principal of U.S.
Oh, yeah, she came up through the ranks, excuse me, with certification pending, she didn't even have the certification when she was given the position.
Was that a good hire?
It was pending.
Was that a good hire?
Absolutely, I know her family, I know her, I like her.
One in race, a Saro student.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm just giving you some examples, Ms. Bonnie Braden, good hire, Mr. Gray...
Well, that was way before your time, sorry.
That would have been during my time.
Okay. Mr. Grant Chigoo, Mr. Gudzinski, Sean Curry, Bob Preston, Claire Gudzinski. I, I can go on, you could probably give me some more names of administrators.
Eric McLaughlin.
Amy Silver. So, but you take one hire that we made from somebody out of the district administrators, and you say this, "We're out, Paul, we don't hire people," and I'm telling you all the people that we did hire through here. So, so when you say these things, you know, they usually...
Well, it just seems like the positions lately, I mean, the principal from Wilson School, one person wasn't considered. Apparently, the head of the math department or a supervisor, there were applicants, we didn't consider that person.
Mrs. Kilcombs, Mrs. Kilcombs.
Nobody, you keep saying they weren't considered.
Were they interviewed?
Every, yes, they were. Every individual from this district was interviewed.
Interviewed?
And they are still being considered.
Okay.
So, let's get the facts straight.
Oh, because the general...
No, 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 let's get the facts straight. Okay, 'cause you're throwing stones at me. And in all due respect, all things being equal, like Mr. McEnone said, I am more than happy to hire somebody internally. Doesn't necessarily mean they're from Saro. Marilyn wasn't from Saro, but she came up through the ranks. So, you're saying two different things. My last five supervisors have all been internal, except for the last one in Language Arts. Mathematics, we haven't picked an individual yet. We're still in the process. Maybe you know more than me, you know, more than everybody on this panel.
Mrs. Kilcombs, the only issue I have with you, and I think it's a fundamental difference in philosophy, you and I, if I had the concern that you have, I would come to the microphone and I would say, I would have a question, what is the percentage of people that you hire that are from Saro versus making the accusation that there should be a sign of Dr. Alfano's house, sign that says Saro residents don't apply?
Well, it's just those three incidents that I told you weren't even granted an interview.
You're talking, you're talking three out of eight, but you, you, it's not the case. If I'm gonna hire a math supervisor, I'm going after, you, I could have a very qualified person here in district, but if I got somebody to interviews that's Ivy League educated, like the guy we were looking at, that was an engineer and Lucinc and had, you know, you know, these are critical positions that we need to hire for, and we need to hire the very best if we're gonna educate our kids. That's reality, but I agree with you that if we're looking for custodians in those jobs that are non-certified, the facts are the facts on the number of people that are hired in this district. And if, and if we can get the more, updated statistics, I will present that to you at the next meeting.
Well, the thing, too, is salaries. You talk about custodians, you hire them at a poverty level. Poverty, the state of New Jersey, that's considered poverty, you can't even rent an apartment, it's 20-some thousand dollars. I mean, and then, to be given a hard time, teachers, our teacher salaries, once was low per student because our teacher salaries are low, not our administrative salaries, but our teacher salaries are low. That's why they're leaving, going for 9,000 more or whatever, which I don't blame them[1678.04] why they're leaving going for nine thousand more or whatever, which I don't blame them in this economy. So where does that leave Saro? So we find, we find money for administration, we find money for athletics, we find money for everything. But I think you just better, the morale, I think you better start teaching your employees a little bit different. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry to provide the inconvenience of the facts. Anyone else would like to speak from the bottom? Yes, sir, Michael. Yes, Michael. Yes, sir.
Michael Garber, twenty-three Avenue. I'd just like to say I'm part of Sheri Krasny, who's my boss, who has given me training for the last three years, who has taken us and provided training for us and treats us with respect that we hadn't had in years prior.
She's tough and I think that makes.
She is tough. She makes our job difficult.
And it's a great line.
Okay, you know what? I enjoy working for her.
And I'm glad I voted for her. And I also want to comment, you do not look like a Polish woman. I just wanted.
Hey, I work with her. And you know what? We need a little bit more if that's what we get to clean our buildings and keep our buildings together.
And the buildings look great.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Sorry for that. Anyone else on the phone would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
From the opinion of fifty-four Kears, going on from the teachers who are leaving, you had mentioned that earlier. Is it because, what's, I mean, I know you're saying the money the other districts are paying more. Why is that? Like, is it because we pay more taxes here because most, we don't really?
Well, look at some of the districts. Look at some of our Navy districts. Districts are broken up into what they call district factor groups. And district factor groups, Sabal is what we call, it's a, it's a D E.
Correct.
Yes.
D E. And a district factor group is determined by the property tax rate in the town and the average income of the town. And that's what they base it on, okay? There's a direct correlation. In any study that you look at in education, the amount of money a district spends and, and how well kids do academically, okay? And the districts go from A B, which are the poorest districts, which you'll find in most Abbott districts, all the way to J K, which is the richest district, like you look at Bergen County and those types of districts. One of our teachers I know that went to an Abbott district with a salary increase of ten thousand dollars, at a lower step than what they were on here. It's hard for us to compete with that. Now, we're in negotiations now with the S E A and they're gonna get a pay raise. The issue with pay also is a matter of Sabal has a record of budgets that are not been passed. And when those budgets weren't passed, we lost a million dollars here, half a million dollars there, and those add up. Those are monies now that the two percent cap is based on a smaller number. So when you can only raise your tax levy by two percent, the budget's gonna get smaller and smaller and smaller, okay? And that's the fact. Now, our teacher salaries are low and that's not something I'm proud of. And Sabal, if you look at the school report card, always fluctuates between two and three of the lowest spending districts in the state for students, okay? And I'm not proud of that fact either, okay? And with a two percent cap, it's gonna be very difficult to play catch up.
Is there a huge turnaround rate with the teachers because of the pay? Or you know the same?
The district I work in in Jackson, it's a little bigger than Sabal and we have like a hundred people that are moving, going on other districts. Some of our teachers, I know one teacher that I spoke with got a supervisor position in another district. So they're moving up, getting a promotion, you know, those types of things. I talked to some teachers. I talked to people too in the districts. Some teachers, I think it was just Mr. Jagu, today at a meeting talked about how happy he is here as a teacher, how he likes the climate here, small town feel, those types of things. I think if you talk to teachers and that's the best thing to do, you're gonna find varying opinions. But money is, money's a factor. There's no doubt about that. And we've been doing our best. If you look at the teacher increases in negotiations over the last two years, they've been higher than the county averages.
And for those who are concerned, let's say with the salaries, let's say, between administrators and between teachers, is there a report, like a breakdown of all the percentages?
Yes, it's called the New Jersey School Report Card. If you get on the Department of Education website and you type in your district Sabal, and it breaks it down to all kinds of categories. Ratio of administrators to teachers, administrators to students, teachers to students, class size, how much you spend on supplies, how much you spend on technology. I mean, it breaks it down to the, I mean, numerous detail. And then it ranks, you know, salaries in all the districts. Again, when you look at that, I caution people to make sure you're looking at apples and apples, meaning you're looking at schools within the same district factor group. And the size of, they categorize districts from one student to thirty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred and higher. And we're in the thirty-five hundred students higher. And so you have to make sure you're comparing those things. But if you look at the report card, you look at our standardized test scores, they're very, very good and they rival districts that spend a couple of thousand dollars more per student. A lot of people talk about Oakbridge. Oakbridge spends about twenty-eight hundred to three thousand dollars more per student than we do. They're in a higher district factor group. So if you took that money difference and you gave it to us, we'd have about twelve million more dollars to play with. We can do a lot with that. Okay, so those are the things that, that we struggle with. But we've had here, you know, the curriculum committee run by Ms. Bacco and Ms. Bruno and I, we've done a lot over the last couple of years that we're doing to, to increase the curriculum, to make kids more competitive. We added an extra ten credits to graduate high school. We eliminated senior early release. We started teaching algebra in the eighth grade. We added more honest courses. We added AP courses. We're doing all those things and we're staying in a very confined budget. Mrs. Kilcombs mentioned we spend money on sports. Yeah, we do. But if you ever wanna have an interesting board meeting, talk about doing away with sports. You know, Sabal is a sports town. It's always been that way. You play football, you wrestle. Sabal's the place to be. We're a district that's won a championship for three years.
But with all this.
You know, all those things cost money. So you have to balance that.
But with all that, that you think that the changes that you put in place, does it put a burden on the teachers and does that make them wanna leave because they, because it is a burden on them? If the burden is on?
I, I think our class sizes could be smaller and I think that's a factor, hiring more staff. How many new staff did we hire, Mr. Budge?
Just so that you know, this year we hired, in the budget, I believe, a seven new staff. And over the past ten years, I'd say that number's about fifty. And I would say we've hired probably the most new staff than any other district maybe in the state of Jersey. When districts were cutting back, we were adding staff. Last year, I think we added seven or eight, nine, even though we had budget maybe four or five.
We added more courses.
Because I know it was Baco's counting and I think we got to about nine. So just in the last two years, we've hired sixteen new teachers to try to hold, reduce the amount of obviously your class sizes at the same time to take on some special education students that we're bringing back from other districts. So we're not only going with high level courses, but we're also trying to bring back our special needs children from other districts, which puts a little bit of a burden on us, but we need more staff. And I commend the Board of Education. In tough times, we keep adding staff and at the same time, we're running a two percent budget. You know, something's gotta give, but at the same time, I would, I would say we're conservative in the last ten years since I've been here hiring. We've hired new teachers every year, every year.
The state of New Jersey comes out with a, what they call adequacy spending, on what the district should be spending for students. Now, we're, I think, three thousand dollars. How lower are we than what the state says we're supposed to be at?
About twenty-six hundred, I think, a kid, somewhere around there.
So the state recognizes that Sabal spends twenty-six hundred dollars less per student than the state says we should be in order to deliver an adequate and efficient education. Okay? And that's not money that we can make up raising taxes, okay, because we have a two percent cap. So if I had that twenty-six hundred dollars each per student, we could solve a lot of those problems that we're talking about. But the reality is that we don't and it's not gonna get any better. And everybody, I think, understands, even the people on the board that have smarter business minds than I do, that with a two percent cap, eventually down the road, five, six, seven, eight, nine years, you're not gonna be able to deliver the same type of product we're delivering now. Because the levy keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and that two percent of a smaller number gets smaller. And that's the reality that we face. And New Jersey is unique because, you know, we have Abbott districts, which a lot of the money goes, that would normally come to the rest of the districts and we can eat out of it. You know, so it's a problem. And, you know, and from that side of the table, you know, and you come from this side of the table, it's a whole different perspective on trying to solve these things. And then you have a roof that needs to be repaired. You have a, every October, I have my fingers crossed and we jack up the boilers, they're gonna work. And we don't have a burner that's not gonna ignite, because that's a million dollars there, so.
It'll be tough.
But this board, I'll tell you, has, has, has really upticked the infrastructure. We spent a lot of money putting on roofs and keeping the buildings going. That has to be balanced with everything else. So the United Arab Emirates was nice to give us seven hundred thousand dollars. That was nice. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for your time. Anybody else on the phone would like to speak? Seeing none, I would accept the motion for adjournment.
Come on.